That wasn't my question.
No, I'm not expecting any questions. But I never know. Okay. This is the public hearing, the Town of Brookhaven IDA public hearing for the Port Jefferson Commons LLC project. I'm going to read the public hearing notice into the record. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to Article 18A of the New York State General Municipal Law will be held by the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, the agency, on the 19th day of August 2025 at 12:00 PM local time at the Village of Port Jefferson Village Hall, 121 West Broadway, second floor courtroom, Port Jefferson, New York 11777 in connection with the following matters. Port Jefferson Commons LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of New York on behalf of itself and/or the principles of Port Jefferson Commons LLC and/or an entity formed or to be formed on behalf of any of the foregoing collectively of the company, has applied to the agency to enter into a transaction in which the agency will assist in: One, the acquisition of multiple parcels of land totaling approximately 0.57 acres located at 1601-1607 Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, the land; Two, the demolition of two existing structures totaling approximately 5,500 square feet located on the land; Three, the construction, equipping, and furnishing of a four-story, approximately 73,430-square-foot multifamily rental apartment building located thereon, excluding an approximately 2,485-square-foot portion thereof that will be used for commercial space, the excluded premises, and containing approximately 52 units and one additional one-bedroom unit to be a superintendent unit of multifamily housing consisting of approximately 32 one-bedroom apartments and 22-bedroom apartments, where 100% of the rental units will be used as affordable housing units for renters earning a range of 30% to 80% of area median income (AMI), including but not limited to a parking garage on the lower level with approximately 60 parking spaces and fitness room, lobby, mailroom, and laundry facilities, the improvements; and four, the acquisition and installation there and of certain equipment and personal property including but not limited to furniture, appliances, structures, equipment, and personal property in the units, the equipment, and together with the land and the improvements to the facility, which facility is to be leased and subleased to the agency, by the agency to the company, used by the company to provide 100% affordable housing for the residents of Port Jefferson, Town of Brookhaven, New York, the project. The facility will be initially owned and managed or operated by the company. The agency will acquire a leasehold interest in the land and in the improvements and title to or a leasehold interest in the equipment and will sublease and lease the facility to the company. The agency contemplates that it will provide financial assistance to the company in the form of exemptions from mortgage recording taxes in connection with the financing or any subsequent refinancing of the facility, exemptions from sales and use taxes, and abatement of real property taxes consistent with the policies of the agency. A representative of the agency will, at the above stated time and place, hear and accept written comments from all persons with views in favor of or opposed to either the proposed financial assistance to the company or the location or nature of the facility. Prior to the hearing, all persons will have the opportunity to review on the agency's website, BrookhavenIDA.org, the application for financial assistance filed by the company with the agency, and an analysis of the costs and benefits of the proposed facility. This was dated August 8, 2025 by the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency. We have one person who is interested in making a statement. Zina, if you would just, when you're ready, state your name and whatever you're most comfortable with, your name and your representation, you know, who you're representing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Zina Yaghrinsky. I currently serve as a trustee, commissioner of finance, and the deputy mayor of the Village of Port Jefferson. I appreciate the opportunity to offer public comment on this particular project. I won't go into all the locations because you just covered that. We recognize the role of the IDA in fostering economic development and addressing critical housing needs, and we support that. We also understand that this project is intended to provide much-needed affordable housing, which is an important goal for our region. However, as the commissioner of finance, my primary responsibility is to safeguard the financial stability and well-being of the village and its taxpayers and property tax revenues, the bedrock upon which our essential village services are delivered and funded. So from public safety to sanitation, road maintenance, other vital community programs. So we are respectfully requesting that any pilot payment and move taxes agreement for this particular project be structured to ensure that those property taxes that have been paid in the past would continue to be kept for year one. If it's going according to the Conifer I schedule, I would imagine it'll be similar, right? So regardless of the duration, et cetera, that year one be started at 2,700. That keeps us flat and would be, you know, in addition to any other Brookhaven IDA items such as recreation fees or something like that. But we just urge the Town of Brookhaven to consider the direct financial impact on the Village of Port Jefferson and work with us in collaboration, as you have been. So thank you very much to just help us, you know, maintain our tax revenue base. This is particularly important in this small village, given sort of the declining tax revenues from LIPA. You know, we're a three-square-mile village, and every dollar, you know, that means that we can provide the services that we have in the past. So I appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak? I'm gonna just, we're gonna leave this open just in case anybody else comes in. I'm just gonna hit you. I'm just gonna hit you.